Sylvia, is there's a reason the salary board is on top?
Yes.
Does that mean we're gonna do that first?
Yes.
Is he here?
Not physically here. He's here. It's nine o'clock, you wanna start the meeting? The bells are going off.
What's your official time clock say?
Nine o'clock.
Well, where is he?
Who?
Alan.
He walked in through the door by the sheriff's office at...
Right now?
Eight forty-nine.
Oh, he was in here, he just...
Oh, okay. I was just clearing alarms.
Mr. Hall!
Oh, no, honey, we're waiting for you.
You gotta put a beeper on him.
About.
Give you a beeper.
Shot caller.
I need a beeper?
You can make it.
Apparently. Call me to order. Mr. Hall, please rise and press please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time for the salary board meeting. These are called the order.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the February twenty-second, twenty-twelve salary meeting.
Motion by Ann Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Approve the minutes. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion approved, item number four, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. Approve the increase in the starting salary for children who use physical officer two. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, Carrie?
I'll make a motion to approve item number five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion for item number five, Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Extend the hours. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. On number six, why are we doing that, Sylvia?
Because when we changed systems, the number got changed, and it never got changed on the page.
That's okay.
Just to clear it up.
Motion approve item number six.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren for item six. The legislation and compensation schedule is follows. Questions or comments?
I'm just curious, I don't recall ever seeing approval during a meeting of the contract for the incumbent of this position. When did that occur? The contract was signed on February eighth, and it was retroactive to January third.
For what position?
For the contract for, um... For DRS solicitor. Is that not so?
The pen seems solicitor for a number of years. I didn't know there was a new contract. I guess I don't understand the question, Greg.
I thought this was... I thought this was converted from an employee position to a contract position. Is that not correct? And that's why you're making this change?
No, that's not why we're making this change.
No, that's why I asked the question.
This change is being made because our computer system changed, our accounting system.
Okay, alright, now I understand, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve number seven as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco for item seven, to limit the National Resource Conservation Service Coordinator Program Specialist Position effective June twenty-ninth. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion close salary board meeting and open the commissioners' meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, close the salary board meeting, open the commissioners' meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. Open the commissioners' reading. Make the rise for the questions and deans again.
You gotta do them.
Okay, all the present, item four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June thirteenth, twenty-twelve meeting.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the minutes of the June thirteenth meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Patty Ritchie. Ooh, messy years.
Please come forward, we have a recommendation for you for fifteen years of service. Congratulations, and thank you for your service to the county.
Good job.
Thank you.
Motion approve item number six as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Item six, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve the cash disbursements and liquidity fund transfers. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the seminar request and payments for the requests as listed on your agenda.
I second it. I was reading the...
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the seminar request. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie. Item number eight.
Motion approve item number eight as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve Resolution twenty-twelve dash ten-eight for the Penda Engineering. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number nine as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Item nine, motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to acknowledge and accept the grant by the President, Judge Ken Simmons, the retirement of Reverend Collins. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion approve item number ten as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to ratify the hiring of Mark Phillips, a Clifford Township with full-time, non-union supervised position of fiscal officer to children and youth starting at forty-one thousand. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, Carrie, item eleven.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eleven as listed on your agenda.
Yes, second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to ratify the signing by the Commissioners Amendment Two of the Contribution Agreement between the Susquehanna County Commissioners and Natural Resource Conservation Services. Questions or comments?
What does the county get from that?
From the...
From this agreement?
From this agreement. This is an ongoing agreement that's been in place for several years. And what it was is it was extended for one week and then terminated. Was for a position that was at the NRCS for clerical support to NRCS, but also did work for soil conservation too. As a benefit to the county, it was work that was to help the residents of Susquehanna County with the NRCS programs as well as soil conservation.
Clear as mud. We're paying eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-six cents extra. What are we... We're not...
No, we're... The contract, the extension on the contract is to, for us to collect eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-six cents of contribution toward the salary and benefits to extend it for one week.
I'm still not clear. We have this agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture. What does Susquehanna get in return? Does Grand County get in return? What do the people get? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, what do the people get? And that's what Alan just told you.
The individual works for... Individuals, a county employee that works for NRCS. They do work for NRCS, which is a benefit to the communities in Susquehanna County, which is flood mitigation, all kinds of other programs that they offer. In addition, the person also does work with soil conservation, which provides programs for the farmers and other community members.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item twelve.
Motion to adopt item number twelve as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to terminate with regret the employment of Marlene Bailey, NRCS Service Office Coordinator Program Specialist due to contract termination. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number thirteen as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to accept the resignation of Todd Dunney for nine-one-one. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number fourteen as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to authorize for Commissioner Hall to sign the New Muffet Senior Housing Payment and Move Taxes Agreement. Tax payment resolution regarding this project was adopted January twenty-fifth. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie?
I'll make a motion to approve item number fifteen as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Okay, item fifteen, motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to ratify the signing of the Prince George to the Housing Integration Grant Program for financial assistance between Susquehanna County and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion approve item number sixteen as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to hire Tracy Daniels Matros of open full-time position in dispatch and training at rate nine twenty-five per hour. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, Carrie?
I'll make a motion to approve item number seventeen as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Item seventeen, motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to hire C.R. Greenwood Matros of open full-time position in dispatch and training at rate nine twenty-five. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, Carrie?
Motion to approve item number eighteen as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve, to hire Ronald Dawson of Friendsville to the open full-time position in dispatch and training at rate nine twenty-five per hour. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number nine as listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve item nineteen. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
If you've hired an individual as fiscal officer, why does he have to be trained?
Fiscal officers that are hired don't know exactly every program or all the details that are required to do the grant applications for the position. They come through the Selective Service Program, so they do meet the requirements, but people aren't trained in the... And although the individual that was hired doesn't know a lot about the programs, it's still gonna take some training so that they know how to do the budgets and everything for the grants.
Could you tell me how much that person is being paid? The fiscal officer?
The current one or the new one?
The new one.
The new one is...
Forty-one thousand.
Forty-one thousand.
Well, I have a comment. Back where I come from, forty-one thousand would mean he would have some knowledge of grant applications.
Well, he does. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Jean, okay, before we go any farther, I have two other ones here. I need a motion to purchase a new pickup truck in the maintenance department from Fairway Motors. It's on a CoStar program. It's a CoStar bid at a price of twenty-four thousand eight seventy-one thirty cents.
Okay, three-quarter ton?
So, one-ton Chevy, twenty-twelve, brand-new.
One-ton?
One-ton is the same vehicle, but it was actually cheaper than three-quarter. And they're state-approved. It's through the state bid system.
Motion approved.
I'll second that. Twenty-four eight seventy-one thirty?
Twenty-four eight seventy-one thirty. And it's from Fairway Motors in Hazelton, PA. That's their closest CoStar dealer I could find. The other ones were either in Bethlehem, Harrisburg, or here in Pittsburgh. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren for the purchase of this vehicle. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So, Carrie? Also need another motion to sell the vehicle that's here, the two-thousand F-150 Ford, to put that out to bid.
I'll make that motion. What is it, two thousand?
It's a two-thousand F-150 Ford pickup truck.
Should we make the motion?
Yes.
Send it here.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to put the two-thousand F-150 Ford out to bid. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Carrie? This time, I'll have public comment.
I have a question.
Yes, Tony.
Wondering whether the commissioners plan to submit a budget for the Act thirteen money before July sixth of this year.
Submit a budget?
Budget.
We don't have to submit a budget.
Okay, we're told that you do, but I don't know.
No, what the... What... No. The municipalities, Toby, according to the Act, and they're getting tons of inquiries, like every three days, are getting a questionnaire from PSATs, Pennsylvania State Association of Townships, and the borough. Boroughs are getting it from their state association. And all it is, the ones I have seen, what the Act does require them to do is send them their budget numbers. Because as you know in the Act, what they receive is the greater fifty percent of the budget for five-hundred thousand dollars. So, they need to know what their budget number is. So, when the PUC comes time to dole it out, and all of them that I know of have sent that in, it's a very simple form. The form really is ask for the budget.
We contacted the PUC, and we're told they expect something from the county as well. But I don't know. Between the county and the PUC.
Don't know about that. I've looked at it several times. And it is the number, and I've had some discussion with people. There is... There's no county in the state that has a budget for less than five-hundred thousand dollars. So, it became kind of academic that because that's the threshold amount, the issue was moot.
Yeah, it is too, because also you don't have the calculation of how much you can get from the county.
Yeah, we don't do it, they do it.
My understanding, it wasn't a budget as to how you were gonna spend the money. It was a budget as to what was your budget gonna be, so they could calculate how much they were gonna give you.
That's true.
But then there's a September date where you do have to submit how you plan to spend the money. So, and I think for the counties, it's simply a reporting of how you spent it, rather than how you plan to spend it.
Well, that's the following there. We can't tell them how we're gonna spend something. We don't know what we're gonna get.
It's different for municipalities and counties, I believe.
Yes, it is. There is a difference.
Yeah, we have forms that they've already started to create that basically tracks all the money that has to be spent, and basically have to show where every dollar goes.
Right. So, when you get to the budget point where you start talking about how you plan to spend that money? I mean, that's our interest as we...
Well, we see how much we're gonna get. We're not gonna spend money we don't have yet.
Of course not.
But then when we get it, we'll figure that out.
But that might be before September?
No, it will not be before September.
So, you receive the funds in September, then?
No, we aren't gonna receive the funds in September. We probably won't receive the funds till November, December, if we're lucky. September is when everything is in. Supposedly, they will have all the money, and then the PUC between when they get it in September and before the end of the year will hopefully have it all figured out, be sending out money.
So, your budget cycle this year will be affected by whatever you think you're going to get?
We are gonna make a budget based on what we think we're gonna get. I believe we're gonna wait till we see what we're actually going to get, and then take the next step to determine what we're gonna do with it. Because you know the Act dictates what we can and cannot do with it.
Exactly, right.
And we'll have to go through that and see what we're gonna do. Do you disagree? I mean, I don't know how we can do it any other way, that's why.
Yeah, well, we're trying to figure out...
I know, library wants money.
Yeah, exactly.
Everybody wants money.
Well, we need money. It's not that we want it, we need it.
Yeah, we understand.
Any other public comment?
I'd like to know that the past four years, you know, we've had increasing number of families whose water has gotten contaminated after drilling and fracking nearby, starting, of course, with Dimick in two thousand and eight, and now it's spread out to Lennox, and now it's spread out to Franklin Forks, and it goes all around our county to Auburn. I'd like to know what you, as commissioners, are doing about that to advocate for these citizens in our county who are having difficulties. We also have farms where the cows couldn't drink the water, and the water had to be brought in. And then the people went into such debt that they couldn't keep the cows and had to sell them. This is in our county. So, what are you planning to do to advocate for these people? The DEP is only doing so much. The EPA is only doing so much. And I have never seen any of you say anything about the people with problems with water, also with noise from the compressor stations, with the air quality changes from the compressor stations and from the gas sites. And I haven't seen you visit any of them. So, I'd like to know why that is.
Any comment? We don't have any authority to do anything. And we've been told stay out of it.
And who told you to stay out of it?
Well, number one, it's in the Oil and Gas Act. We don't have any authority to control any of that. And number two, anything that's in litigation, my opinion is, I'm staying out of it. Let the litigation proceed.
Now, only some of the families are in litigation, some are not. We even have families in Mountain View School District. Even the superintendent of the schools, Mr. Chatura, is getting water since last September. And he has a water buffalo. Besides the president, the former president of the school board, Mr. Sick, who is now deceased, and another family, the Salters. So, they're not in litigation, as well as other families are not in litigation. So, what do you have to say about that?
I'm not gonna get involved in it.
And why not?
Because we have no authority to.
And what about just concern for your fellow constituents?
It's horrible.
It's horrible?
Don't like it.
You don't like it? So, can you advocate for them in some way and just try and get more help? Advocate to the governor. Advocate to Cranzer, the head of the DEP. Do something to say, you know, this is what's happening. Increasing numbers throughout our country.
They all know what's...
This, but you can talk to the press. You can advocate for them. And you can talk to the people, come to see them. You have yet to see...
I've talked to a lot of them.
You've talked to the ones who are affected?
Well, I am not going to... You asked me a question as to what I was gonna do, and I told you. I'm not gonna debate that with you.
So, and what about you, Mr. Hall, and Ms. Warren? What can you do for these people? What can you do to advocate for them? We have increasing numbers of citizens that are hurting, that have been hurt by the industry. The industry is exempt from... Have so many exemptions that no other industry in the whole country has. And so, they have special privileges in this country and in this county. And can you say something and advocate for them? And let the world know. And/or you can come and have a tour. I mean, I give tours every week and show media and citizens from all over the world even, and other states, what's happening. So, they can see firsthand and talk to these people, see what they're going through. And you have yet to come and see them. So, would you like to? Would you like to see them? I'll give you a tour.
I've advocated in Harrisburg with the seller's sale commission.
I've advocated in Harrisburg with the Marshes Sellers Sale Commission. I've been asked to be there. I showed pictures. I spoke to them before they even decided what was going to happen. I've met with Secretary Cranzer.
And what did you tell Mr. Cranzer?
Exactly what you said. That the water is tainted. Something needs to be done.
And what did Mr. Cranzer have to tell you?
They're working on it.
And what about you, Mr. Hall? What can you do for us?
Same thing I told you when we had our meeting here before, when the rest of the public wasn't here, when you came and met with me and we discussed it done. My answer's still the same though.
Which is?
Well, check your notes and you'll see what it was.
Well, can you tell the other people that are here who weren't there?
Well, I spent enough time with you and explaining my position and also what I was doing. So you have the notes, you wrote them down, so you can add that to your dialogue there.
You also said to us several times that you're afraid of being sued. Oh, can you be sued as an official?
Absolutely. Any official can be sued. Any person can get sued. So, any other public comments?
I'd like to know what you said to her because I wasn't able to hear it.
Well, they're exactly the same thing that Michael and Marion have been saying. Anytime I get the opportunity to talk to anybody in Harrisburg or any official about the water quality and the air quality, I make sure that I advocate to make sure that we're doing the right things.
How do you advocate? Because now, I had not even considered this as a question, but my concern is, I have a well that has gone up quite close to my property, and I have taken steps to make sure that we had our water tested prior to having Cabot tested, and that still is not going to ensure that I'm gonna have clear water and noise abatement. I don't believe for a second that there's nothing that the county commissioners can't do. The county commissioners agreed to take an impact fee. You speak to these people all the time. You mean they just come in and they run amok and we just have to take it?
The agencies...
And excuse me, let me finish. I don't have a lease, so, you know, I would think that if you've signed a lease and maybe you have some sort of mitigating circumstance that allows you to accept what's going on, but if you don't, then nobody in town, in county is gonna come to our aid. You have no power to do anything. If my water is tainted, if the well blows up, if my forest goes on fire, there's absolutely nothing. So we're at the mercy of this industry?
You're not at the mercy of the industry. There are state agencies and federal agencies that are responsible that are supposed to be taking care of it, and that's who we have to work through. And if there's issues and concerns, our 911 people, emergency management people, they call the appropriate people. And we call DEP, we call federal agencies. And we also talk to the, you know, I've talked several times to the senators and House of Representatives and tried to encourage them to take and do more in Harrisburg. So all that information's there.
Is available to the public to see?
What's that?
All the information that's available and what we can do to protect ourselves. Because you've just said we have no protection under our county supervisors.
Well, if you've got a water problem, you call DEP. You call, DEP's a great place to start with. Department of Environmental Protections and other agencies can start with.
And Ghostbusters if things get really bad, right?
Any other public comment?
Craig Stevens, Silver Lake Township. This is the first meeting I've attended that the commissioners are putting on, but Vera started off by talking about, I watched what was happening in Dimmock. That's far enough away from me just to look at it. Then it showed up in Franklin Forks. If you aren't aware, it showed up in Franklin Forks on December 6th of 2011. That's eight months ago. On July 6th, it'll be eight months. Nothing has been done. I called Colin Connolly just last week. Where's the test results for the water? Where's the test results for the methane? We're still working on it. Now, it takes about three weeks to get isotopic analysis of methane. We're at eight months right now. If you don't know what happened there, the reason I got interested is, I have a half a mile of a laser pipeline that my family allowed to be put in across our property. And if you're not aware, they did a real bad job. Matter of fact, if you read the paper anytime around end of July to September last year, they blew the creek out, the bottom of the creek out, Laurel Lake Creek in my backyard, eight times in a row in June and a half months. They were stopped by the DEP. They were even called the Secretary Cranzer's office. But I was told every time I called, no problem. They went up on my property after that and destroyed it. I mean, literally just tore it right through it. They did a mud bog. They had to tow their own trucks out of the mud, dumped 100,000 gallons of unknown liquid substance on my property outside of the scope of my right of way. So I have legal representation to go after that. But I called the DEP. As you're saying, that's our agency to call. They did absolutely nothing. They came up four times and told me there was nothing wrong on my property. So I called the Fish and Boat Commission as a hail mary pass. Took them three weeks and they showed up. The first thing they said was, hey, we just had the two biggest floods in the history of the state of Pennsylvania. Of course your creeks are muddy. I said, they're staying muddy and that, everything, all the other creeks cleared up. Mine are staying muddy. I wanna know why. They went up, they immediately saw a problem. They told Laser, who was installing in their contractor, they had 48 hours to rectify the problem of all the mud getting in the creeks, or they were gonna shut them down. Then I get a call a few months ago from the Fish and Boat. They told me, we put five criminal charges against the company. Criminal, not civil, criminal. And they settled for $20,000 in fines. I have a copy of the paperwork. They told I had to do a right-to-know. I sent a right-to-know. They gave it to me in three days. I had the copies of this in three days. But the most telling statement was, by the way, we heard the DEP is doing the same thing. The same agency that told me both in my creek blowout in my backyard and on my property, there was nothing wrong. I did a right-to-know with them. There's 20 pages of violations all along the pipeline route that we never found out about. Secretary Cranzer even came down at the request of Tom Carum and reviewed the whole pipeline route in our area. That was on October 6th of last year. We were not even told. And I called the secretary's office every week to wanna know what the DEP was doing about the problems on my property. They didn't even respond with a phone call. But then I read in the paper that he showed up right in my backyard to review with Tom Carum, the owner. You know where Tom Carum did not take him? To my property where all those violations were done. Didn't even take them up. I wonder why. And the glowing report from Secretary Cranzer was, they did such a great job, we can't wait for phase two and phase three. Here's the problem with phase two and phase three. Laser finished that pipeline in November and sold it three days after to Williams for $750 million. That's three quarters of a billion. They told us, the landowners, we were gonna get five bucks a foot and a lifetime easement. And that was all we were gonna get. That's the only deal they were gonna give. And they were gonna take it by certificate of public convenience if we didn't like it, which means imminent domain. That never came through because we all spoke against imminent domain. Because it's not a FERC line, we were able to stop it. My problem is, they cried poor, spent what was supposed to be 65 million, but because of public input and everything being listed as wetlands, it became 150 million. It sounds like a lot of money until you get 750 million back. Three days. I dragged Tom Carum onto my property. He came up. Then he had to leave to go to New York City for a meeting. You know, that meeting was a negotiation for three quarters of a billion dollar contract. This guy who cried poor even that day about fixing my property up. We don't have the money to do it. I'm just not interested in what these people have to say. So here's the problem I'm having with that. There's two state agencies that both found problems on my property that were done by a contractor that was working installing pipelines for the industry. So I said, great, now come up and tell me and review my creek and my property and tell me what the state is gonna do to force them to fix it. We can't do that, Mr. Stevens. We've already settled with them and accepted a settlement agreement. We can't make them do anything beyond that settlement agreement. So now I'm stuck as a landowner with contaminated water in my backyard and my creek, and contamination on my property, and nowhere else to go. They told me to get a lawyer. This is the DEP you're telling us to go to. EPA was there in August after they did the dumping. They've done nothing. There was no response from them, even though they did soil analysis and everything. I've gotten nothing back from them. Now, I had my water tested five times for free. I wanna make sure everyone in here knows. I paid nothing for five water tests. Laser did the first three last year, March, July, and November. They did pre, during the blowout times, and post drilling. My water came up clean. No major problems. I forced DEP, I demanded that DEP come and test because of the problems that happened. They did in March. They, I got a phone call about a month and a half ago from Mike O'Donnell that said, hey, we forwarded your test results. We want you to call us immediately to talk about it. That was on a voicemail. Then he was not available the whole day to call back. That was a little disconcerting to me. Finally got ahold of him on Monday. He said your iron, because I gave him a copy of the first three tests I had done for free by Laser, my iron spiked by five times. The only change that happened was, one, WPX drilled a well up on Phil Dupus' property near me that is 5,000 feet away. It's a mile from my house. That's the only change. And they're investigating it. And the laterals, the horizontals went right above my property to the northwest, and the southwest, guess where they went? Right underneath Franklin Forks. This is from Mike O'Donnell, the DEP. Now, what did they tell the people in the Forks when their water was bubbling and they had black soot in the water? We don't know how the methane got in your water. We think it migrated over from Fault Springs Park. They asked them, how did that happen? We're not sure. Is it having anything to do with the gas drilling? Well, we haven't tied those two together. Okay, well, it changed suddenly for multiple families. And if you don't know, four came forward, but we know many more than that had problems. Let me tell you, I called the county emergency management. They did nothing for the people in Franklin Forks. I got a little worried when it was two miles from my house. So, no help from the DEP, they refused. WPX said they would not give these people water like they did in Dimmock and other areas. Lennox would not. Refused to give them water. They were fighting each other. The DEP saying, well, WPX will determine. WPX says DEP has not given us an order to do it. So I got a little tired of waiting, seeing that it had been three months that they'd been living like that. So I called PMA, because I called the county and they said, we don't have anything to do with that. So I called PMA, and in five seconds on the phone, I said, I'm declaring a methane explosion emergency hazard on 29 in Pennsylvania. In five seconds, I was talking to Bob Full, the director of PMA. And you know what Bob Full said? He could not believe what I was talking about. Could not believe it. He called and confirmed with the people there. The next day, WPX and DEP had water buffaloes coming to those people's houses and vent pipes. One reason, because a citizen had to get involved to do it. Not the county commissioners, not Charlene Mosier from emergency here in Suspana County, not anybody else, but I have to call the state agency and talk to the head of PMA to get it done. Now, I'm concerned with what you just said. The county can't get involved in helping people get water or vent pipes? Well, you know what? When we had the floods, if you called up and said, I'm without water, food, or shelter, you got water, food, and shelter within 24 hours. Hundreds of people around here did in the county. People from other states and other communities and other counties sent in aid under mutual aid agreements. You know what happened when I tried to get water to the people in Dimmock after the state cut it off on November 30th? Nobody else could help. Matt Ryan actually came and offered water to the community for nothing on mutual aid. Dimmock refused it. I didn't see the county step in either. I'm not upset with you guys. I'm just wondering, who are we supposed to go to? You're saying go to the DEP. I did. I've got stacks of evidence that say they did nothing and they're still refusing to do anything. It's not, it's not, it's not right. Now, I have documents right here. You got a new movie out. I recommend you see it. It's called Truthland. My neighbor, Shelley Dupus, did this. Now, Shelley forgot to mention that well number 8H on their property had well casing failures right there on the DEP's records. She forgot to mention it in her Truthland movie. My problem is, I don't care what Shelley thinks about the industry, and I'm sure they're happy because they're getting checks every month. We're not. Your neighbors don't get checks if you're not in their pooling unit or anything else. But what I did get was 300 trucks a day driving across my road. They destroyed the road, destroyed my bridge next to my house. Okay, I'm not against the industry. I'm just trying to figure out why we're letting them create these problems and not demanding they fix them, and everybody punts to the DEP. Well, what happens when the DEP doesn't have an answer for you? When people like Secretary Cranzer will not only refuse to talk to you and call you back, even though you're in the paper eight times in a row for two and a half months, I'm in the paper quoted. Not only does he not show up for me, the citizen, and help me, he shows up to tour with the CEO, the ex-CEO of Union Pacific Railroad, Tom Carum, who made, you know, a cool $600 million on the sale for the pipeline. Now, we have the Constitution pipeline, they wanna build a Constitution pipeline through New York. No, it's not. It starts in Pennsylvania. And if you want a real eye-opener, the central compressor station in Brooklyn looks like the start of it. But right now, the DEP has that down as a single compressor station with two engines in it as part of the regular pipeline that's right there. That is not the way it is. If you look at the Constitution line, which I have a map here, it starts right there at the central compressor station. They're gonna sneak it in under a general permit, a GP5. GP5 has no oversight. When the Springville compressor blew up, nobody, everyone showed up. The PUC showed up. Everybody showed up. We can't do anything about this. It's out of our jurisdiction. So then you ask, who jurisdiction is it? No one's. We're considered a rural county and a rural area. We're under class one. Class one means there's no oversight besides the company that installs the pipelines and the compressor stations. I don't know about you, but I'm not feeling very happy about it, that I have a gas pipeline 200 yards behind my house that has no oversight, not federal, not state, not county. The only ones overseeing it are the guys that built it, and they sold it three days after to some other contractor. How are we supposed to control this? There is no oversight, none. Now, we come to the county because you're the leaders of our county, and we're just trying to bring this to your awareness. I hope that you're listening to what I'm saying. The DEP is doing nothing, zero zilch. Matter of fact, as far as I can see from watching what happened in Dimmock, they had a pipeline considered for water to them to fix the problem permanently for them. Then the state canceled it, okay? It was approved, $12 million loan, forgivable loan, no tax money increase. I was with there when they did it. But my focus is now protection of what? Me and my community. The reason I'm here is, have you seen the invasion plan for WPX for Silver Lake Township where I live? They only have 10 well pads that are going in, only. That'll be about 80 wells. They're spread out all over the community. My problem is, and I've demanded from the DEP, why should we allow WPX to come to our community and drill before you get a definite scientific evidence position and statement on what happened two miles away in Franklin Forks? I refuse to allow WPX to drill in the township I live in until I have an answer from the state agencies, what happened in Franklin Forks. It's the same company. It's the same people. So we wanna know. They have the audacity. They showed up in the beginning of May to the Silver Lake Township meeting with their people, including Susan Oliver. Real nice lady, 20 years in the Army and PsyOps. This lady will, you bring up a problem and she'll put it right back on you. You're the problem, every single time. Well, they spoke and assured all of us that there was no problem. They'd already determined the methane was biogenic, not thermogenic, from drilling. They'd already determined that the water wells were the fault. They got all the determinations done and they stated it publicly in front of my three supervisors of my township, like it was fact. So we immediately called the DEP. They said, we didn't make any of those determinations. So you've got these companies going around telling not just them, Laurel Lakes Group, for the Laurel Lake Association, Forest Lake Association, Silver Lake Association. They're going to every one of them and lying to them. That is a lie. When you make a bold statement that it's truth from the company that's doing the drilling and the DEP has not made a determination, they shouldn't be able to say a word. I was told it's First Amendment. It's not First Amendment. First Amendment, you have to tell the truth. If you lie, you can be called on a lie with the First Amendment. Can't yell fire in a theater. You can't come to my community and tell us everything's safe and fine, there's no problem, when there might be. You have to say, it's under investigation by the DEP and we're unsure of what happened, but we'd like to come and drill in your community now. What would the answer be if that was your community? Why don't we wait till we find out what happened? You know what they told us at that meeting? They're not drilling in Silver Lake Township till after the end of summer. You know why? Because millionaires have cottages at the lakes, and they absolutely don't want 300 to 500 trucks a day running over their kids who are trying to get a ball across the street there, and the traffic and the noise that will ruin their entire summer. So they're gonna wait and ruin our fall. That's how they're gonna work it. So Vera started it, okay? She asked a question. I don't wanna hear this. You guys have plenty of power to do everything else in this county. You are the leaders of this county. I'm not asking you to get in legal jeopardy. I'm asking you, when we do go to all the agencies, we, the citizen, do all the work. We call DEP, we call EPA, we call everybody and beg for help and to have them come and they don't, I expect the leaders of this community to do it. My father spent 63 years in emergency management in the Civil Air Patrol. He worked with everybody here and in Broom County. He was the second call Tom Ridge made after he was brought, resigned the governorship and became the head of Homeland Security. The second call was to my dad. He refused it because he thought it sounded too much like a job for retired guy, but he called him because my dad was extremely good at emergency management. My dad wouldn't tolerate this, what's going on for 30 seconds. Not for 30 seconds. So I'm here to tell you, I expect more from not just you, my leaders. I expect it from the state, from our governor. He can't turn his back on everybody. Sooner or later, we're gonna find out what's wrong with this when something big happens. And I mean, if it has to be bigger than like in Franklin Forks right down the street or Dimmock, I don't know what it's gonna be. Compressor station explosions, people that are on the board of down at Mountain View School District that have water buffalos that nobody knows about, but it's hard to hide when the trucks pull in, the water trucks pull in, to fill up every day. There's my problem. You tell me one thing in this county, how many people have been killed in accidents that are directly related to the industry? I know of one, John Jones. They still have not determined anything on his death. I can't have this happen. I can't watch the school bus turn around right in front of my house and one day get craned by the trucks coming down with kids involved. That is directly involved. I called the school about the turnaround problem. They put signs up immediately, the school board did, here at Montrose, immediately put schools that said, school bus turn around, please slow down, the whole thing. They put signs up and down the road because they were concerned. We have a concern. We're coming to you, okay? I'm very concerned because they wanna come and drill in my, I'm not picking on WPX, but they have a track record right down the road. I'm not picking on any part of the industry. If they do wrong, they need an answer to it. The problem is, you find me one court case in the state of Pennsylvania where they've had to be held accountable in a court of law. There is zero. There is no case law that anybody's been sued and it's gone to court in front of a jury. It's always settled with a non-disclosure statement, so none of us find out what happened, or it never gets there. People give up. They fight for years. Dimmock is coming up on four years. Whether that happened or not, whether there's contamination, I get worried. That's our fate unless people step in. They got no help. Their own township, zero help. Wouldn't even allow them to get free water from Binghamton at all. The county, zero help. All of our elected officials, zero help. Sandra Major won't touch this with a 10-meter cattle prod. Neither will Gene Yaw. He's never visited and never come. But I see them in the paper, and here's the worst one. I'll leave it with this. There's the PUC and Drexel University at a forum, the entire board of the PUC. They're the ones that put imminent domain on us. They're the ones that let all this happen, that say they have no power over things. Here's the whole board meeting about what? Converting all of our vehicles for county, state, and even federal to natural, to run CNG. That makes me feel really good that I'm not gonna get imminent domain on my property when the guys that give imminent domain are at the meetings talking about the wonders of natural gas. Who's next to them? Michael Nutter. Where do we think this is all going? This Constitution pipeline has already been told it goes to Albany and splits to Long Island, and it goes to Boston. I don't wanna be the extraction colony to serve energy to the major cities in the United States. It's not, it's not my job. I didn't move here to live in industrial land. I moved here to get away from all that. I grew up in Southern California and in Metro DC. I lived there for four years. I don't wanna live in the city anymore. I didn't expect to have 300 trucks a day driving past my house 24 hours a day. So please, I respectfully ask, no, I demand, as a citizen of the county and a taxpayer, you have a job to do, and that one job is to protect the citizens of this community. That's it. That is what, that's what you do such a good job doing. I see your care and everything you just did with making sure people, even thanking them for service, and regretfully, they put a resignation in and you take it regretfully because they were good employees. We understand that. But let's extend that out. If somebody comes to the county, they should ask. At the very least, they should make the call to DEP with the person, not make us, the citizen, do it. We can't control this. If we... If we can't control the industry, who can? I have a contract with Laser, they broke the contract left and right, but, but I can't do anything. The state won't do anything. So, I'm respectfully requesting more action by this board, these commissioners here, to respond to the public, not outside of Suscaloosa County, in your authority, in this county. And I demand that anybody represents us, voting, we voted for you, all of us voted for the people that are here, or even if we didn't, you're our commissioners. We also either voted or represented by Gene Yaw, Sandra Major, Tom Marino, and we've got two US senators. Not one of those five elected officials will touch this at all. They won't even make a statement, except for when they put their arm around somebody who's gonna put in a new water processing plant or something. I find that very interesting. And I know I have a vote. So, thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you're taking this as seriously as I am, because I'm gonna make sure this gets solved no matter what. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
I have a question for each commissioner, and it's the same question, and I'd like an answer from each commissioner. Do you consider what Mr. Craig Stevens said official testimony and will it be printed in the minutes?
No.
Thank you very much.
And why, and why not? Why is that not considered official testimony?
There's the Open Records Act right there, it says in it, the names of all citizens who appear officially and the subject of their testimony that were re-recorded, that is the Open Records Act right there. So, I, I would appreciate that any statements made by the people that take the time to show up here, that would be an insult to me if I took my time. I only drove 10 minutes, but some people here probably drove 30 or 40 minutes to get from other parts of the county. To show up and make any statement and be ignored, I understand you're listening, which is great, we really appreciate you giving us the opportunity to talk. But to not have it recorded and not have other people in the future know what was said, so, just like anything that you just passed, that would be insulting to me to show up because that would be considered me wasting my time, and I hope I'm not wasting my time here, because I know you're not. It's very important to you guys to hear from all of us. I wanna make sure that anything that anybody says that feels important enough to come and talk is, is recorded. So, I'm also requesting that it be recorded, if anybody's statement here, and that it be in the minutes, at least a synopsis of what was said, so that it can't just disappear from meeting to meeting every two weeks. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm also requesting that this, all these comments be recorded, and I'd like to know why they're not being recorded.
Thank you for your public comment, yes.
When did the commissioners start the budget process in 2013? How many public workshops are you planning to have so the public can participate in the process?
I don't know yet, I haven't had those discussions yet, it's about what we're gonna, how we're gonna do it.
Will you inform the public at one of the meetings or in the newspaper? No, not the one in Scranton, the tiny little box, but a local newspaper, that there will be public workshops so we can participate in the process?
Once the commissioners make a decision, we'll let the public know how we're gonna do the budget process.
How will you let them know?
We'll let them do a public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Well, no, I'd like to have another comment. I'd like to know after the explosion in Lathrop's compressor station in March, the end of March, any changes in the emergency plans that you have for your county? Have you added anything new? Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, I can tell you one thing, our 911 coordinator worked to get a, helped the Montrose Fire Department get a specialized trailer, plus foam, plus special hosing to deal with that type of an incident.